All right, thank you. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, staff, members of the planning board. Welcome to the Wednesday, January 26, 2022, meeting of the Cohasset Planning Board. It is 6:31 PM and we are operating in Zoom virtual meeting. I'm going to call to order the planning board and then begin with the first item on the agenda, but before I do that, I'd like to ask Ms. Director Lind, who please explain to the public how they can contribute to the discussion.
Thank you very much. Yes, so thank you, everyone in the audience here in the attendee section. We asked that you use the question and answer function to communicate with the board there. You can find it on the bottom of your screen. We won't be utilizing the chat function. You'll find that it'll be disabled. We do ask that you input your name and address. You can either leave written comments into the chat or you can just indicate that you'd like to address the board for a certain topic. And for each public hearing, there will be a designated public comment period. So again, just name an address in the area there in the question and answer. And then when we do, if we do promote you, we ask that you just repeat it for the record. So thank you very much. I'll turn it back to the chair.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Lind. I want to recognize Carolyn Murray, our legal counsel. Also, we have John Howland, who is the building inspector, and Angela Gisso, who is taking minutes for this meeting. So with that, I will-
I just interrupted. Paul Grady is amongst the attendees, so.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Mr. Grady?
There he is.
Can I hear your presence?
As I unmute, you can.
Thank you, sir. So I will now turn the discussion over to Mr. Howland, who is the building inspector, and he will work with us and the applicant talking through the final revised plan set of 124 and 87 Elm Street. Thank you, Mr. Howland, for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair and other members. Yes, I think it was two weeks ago now, the applicant had come to see Lauren and I regarding the minor changes. So we did review those changes with the applicant, made a list of the plans. What's taken place that pushed some of these changes was the final structural drawings for the building as well. So maybe I'll just go through some of the changes they put through. Again, most of them, you have to look pretty carefully to pick up on the new plan and the existing plan. So one of them was the final floor plan and unit layout based on the structural system. Resulted in some minor changes in the elevation of some of the windows. It didn't reduce the size of the windows. It just changed the, again, location of the windows. A couple of doors leading out to balconies got moved to one, either one direction or the other, which we felt was pretty minor. So you really, it was really difficult to pick that up on the visual between before and after. The, on building 124 South, they had a slight reduction in the footprint due to the change in structural. They pulled it back a little bit on the massing on the street. It was, as I say, again, a very minor change, but didn't result more than the, Ted, jump in if there's anything I missed, but didn't result in more than a reduction of a couple of square feet in a few of the units. Again, most of that was due to the structural change. On 87 Building, they had the front elevation gable went from a gable to a gambrel. Again, the massing was very similar and it was a minor change. It didn't affect the square footage on that part, so that stayed consistent. They didn't increase a square foot or deduct it. They did add one parking space in the parking plan. They were able to get one more in. There was a deck in the amenities deck over at building 87, the building into the private terraces adjacent to the unit. So it went from, I guess, an amenities deck to a private deck between two of the units. So again, the size stayed the same. There was no change in that. It was just who had access to it. And let's see, what was the last change? If I missed any here, I think that some of the other minor changes they did include in their plans, all the HVAC utilities and stuff, chimneys finalized so that there was some minor changes in the interior of some of the buildings again. But that was to move things around for the chimneys that came through in those points. But I didn't think that was relevant to the exterior, so we didn't really include it.
Thank you, Mr. Howland. Is that all that you'd like to report?
Yeah, that's it. The other, they did issue most of the other stuff that they had given us was the compliance regulations so that they were updated. Lighting plan, all the submittal of data that had been requested from the planning board. So that was not a change, but just an update that that information is, you know, being brought forward and received as part of the building permit application.
Well, thank you. Mr. Lubitz, would you like to make any comments?
No, I think John captured it, but I just want to reiterate that the entire project still remains compliant with the zoning overlay. And actually, it continues to exceed that compliance. So no change to building height or increased FAR like that. If anything, there's some slight reductions here and there as we work through the structural systems.
Would you mind giving us an update as to where we are in the progress of the project?
Yes, of course. So hopefully, some of you all have been down to the harbor recently and seen the demolition, which is underway. It's taken longer than we all would have expected, but they're making good progress. We did have to empty out 55 fully furnished hotel rooms. So that actually took longer than we expected, but that is underway. And I know that our demo contractor is submitting a demo permit for the building across the street, 87 Elm. So that application will be forthcoming. We are working on construction financing right now and expect to close imminently on that. And we received a written determination from DEP two days ago on the Chapter 91 license process. So, which was a very favorable review. The determination indicated that we were in fact eligible and we had satisfied the conditions for Chapter 91. So things are trending in the right direction on that. And we hope to be in the ground sometime in March or April doing foundations and going vertical, which would put a project completion sometime around 2023.
All right. Well, that's really great to hear. Let me ask the planning board members if any one of you would like to make a comment. I see Mr. Callahan.
I just wanted to ask Ted, Lauren, and Carolyn where we are on the further agreement between the town and the developer about the use of the public space. Are we waiting for the Chapter 91 process to finish before we dig into that or where?
Yeah, I can provide an update just on that. Lauren, I had a similar question to Tom, so I did a little more diligence with DEP and our attorney on that. So the process is they will issue a license condition on that public access agreement. So, which again is that management plan that we discussed. So once the license is issued, that's when the management plan will be negotiated back and forth with the town being a party to that agreement as well.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lind?
I thank you. I'd just like to update that I did receive notice yesterday from the town manager's office that the attorney representing will the applicant and this like board have been communicating about the easements language too. So there will be an update forthcoming on that.
All right, thank you. That was Mr. Howland?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that. They, also the easement language that they're putting together for, you know, with the town will agree with the plan. So the wordage and the plan in place will both coincide so that we don't have any discrepancies between those two. So I think that's the process they're taking care of right now so that they, everything adds up.
Thank you. Mr. Brewer, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I think the plans, the elevations, the views, the completeness of the application is appreciated and it looks good. I mean, this is, it's a little bit different design, but I would say that what was put together builds on what was approved. I particularly had made comments about the glass, about the glass balcony areas where, you know, the fishermen at 4:00 AM could look up into the living room and that might not be great. And I think those kinds of issues have been addressed, at least in part to provide some additional privacy for those unit owners. I did have a question, and I will say that the HVAC units are, they appear to be screened and hidden from view. John, I don't know if you had a chance to check on the acoustical data for the HVAC units on the rooftop?
I did. I know that was submitted. I did not kind of read into it completely. I think whatever the data is, we'll have to just look into that. I didn't think it was a change at this point, so I thought it would just be more as a review.
Right, we want to make sure that those units are quiet relatively, relative to anything else. So if you could take a look at the spec sheets on those, that would be great. I also noted that there's louver windows on the ground floor, especially on the street side for the parking. As if I put on my architect's hat, I'll assume that that's so that that space can be classified as open parking. I think it requires like a 50% or more openness.
So, yeah, so there are two types of louvers. I don't know, on the 87 Elm, those are actually floodgates into the garage, 124 and 1, and North and South Building. Those are some mechanical louvers. We do expect this to actually be a closed garage. So it's not striving to be open right now.
Okay, so there's like a wooden type of louver on the outside that conceals a mechanical or powered damper type of louver on the inside?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
And in the picture of those louvers, the wooden part that we see, it looks really good. I guess my question would be, is it made out of teak or a rocco or something that's gonna hold up over the decades? Would it then be a maintenance issue? Because it's sort of a new element that we haven't seen. I mean, the detail shows louver trellis. I think either of them can do the job of concealing a mechanical grill on the inside. And I'm okay with it being flexible, provided that it does its job of sort of jazzing up that necessary mechanical element. Was that a question?
But I don't have the details on the materials right now, but we will submit those as part of the building permit. But again, the idea is for screening and, you know, architectural aesthetics.
So the goal is to conceal those mechanical elements to the extent possible and that it look really great and hold up. You know, again, exposed wood sometimes finishes, hold up the way they're guaranteed or warranted in the brochure, and sometimes they don't. I don't see any cut sheets on the garage doors. Are those open garage doors? Are they metal? Are they painted metal?
No, the intent on the main garage doors are to be a high quality sort of normal residential slash commercial garage door. The two garage doors connecting the North and South Building, we're exploring different types of garage door systems, which we'll submit as well, but we're trying to do the high speed quiet doors that you see at car dealerships. So that we're contemplating, considering, but they'll be very aesthetically pleasing. Provide, you know, make sure that there's not an ability to get in the building, but also won't slow down the circulation from building to building.
That sounds, that sounds like a good plan. So a resident would put their card in, the door opens and they get in there and it closes right behind them. It's got eyes and all kinds of safety gear and stuff like that.
Yes.
Okay. I think that covers the points. Again, I think that the design evolution is excellent. And I think it's in keeping with what we saw and approved before. And in some cases, I think it's an improvement, but it is different. It's definitely like some aspects of the fenestration and the massing that's a little bit different. But all said, I think it's in keeping with what we approved.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Mr. Grady?
Just a couple. I mean, I may be jumping the gun here, but I've got a couple of questions. When do we hear about the affordable housing component? And when do we start discussing the performance bond that we've brought up? Andy Mount?
Mr. Lubitz?
So Lauren, you want to handle it for me?
Sure, I can speak quickly to some of those. So some of the conditions that we've had in the decision are triggered by a certain action. So the performance bond will be contingent upon the issuance of the first building permit is the way that it's stated in the language. And for the update on the affordable housing piece, I can confirm that we've been in communication with the applicant to get the material submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development. So it's ongoing. I just, I don't have an update as to exactly when we anticipate those units becoming available and eligible for deed certification, but it is in progress.
And the amount of the performance call, will the planning board determine that?
I believe the way it was framed in the decision was that it would be in communication with the building inspector and the Department of Public Works, but I will have to double check on that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And welcome, Mr. Potter. We are in the process of discussing the final revised plan, plan set for 124 and 87 Elm Street. I know you just popped in, but if you have any comments, would you like to present them?
No comments right now.
All right, thank you very much. So you covered all of the issues that I was going to ask questions about, and I really appreciate that. So Lauren, how do we go from here?
I believe that's all that we have to discuss for this for tonight. More updates to come as this continues to progress and hits certain milestones as outlined in your decision. But at this point, I think it's the board is in consensus that the updates that John Howland has reviewed with you are minor in nature and there's no further action that needs to occur.
All right.
We don't have to, we don't have to vote to accept the final revised site plan at this time. We're just getting updated on what the minor modifications are that has been reviewed and it's just a communications.
Thank you. Ms. Murray, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Nothing, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, Mr. Lubitz, thank you very much on behalf of the town. And we wish you the best of luck and that you get rid of 55 rooms worth of furniture as easily as you possibly can. I'm sure that was a real shock. You could have made something stand as tall as the building itself. And we look forward to the future reports. So thank you.
Thank you. It's good to see all of you.
The same. All right, we're still doing very well on time, right on the money. So we now have, are going to be opening a public hearing. And Mr. Grady, would you please read the public hearing document?
Certainly. Could you put it up for me?
I certainly can. One moment, please. Make it a little larger here.
Ready to go?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Notice of Public Hearing Cohasset Planning Board. Pursuant to Section 81 W of Mass General Law, Chapter 41, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform. Webinar ID 84941275837. Password 965249 on Wednesday, January 26, 2022 at 6:30 PM to consider modifying, amending, or rescinding a 23 lot residential subdivision approval decision for property located at 602 Jerusalem Road, otherwise known as Jerusalem Road Estates Subdivision. Phil filed with the town clerk on October 8, 1998. A copy of the Jerusalem Road subdivision decision and plan is on file at Town Hall at the office of the town clerk during normal business hours and can also be found on the town's website, www.cohassetma.org, under the tab Acting PB Applications of the Planning Board webpage, pardon me. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed amendments should attend the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Amy Glassmeyer, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Grady, for reading that. Let me begin by describing how this conversation will proceed. I'm first going to turn to our legal advisor to give us a background on where we stand. I will then turn it to Director Lauren Lynn to fill us in on the sort of history of how the laws have changed from 1998 until now as it relates to regulations of subdivisions. We will then proceed to speak with the applicant. We will then move on and talk to the planning board members. And then we will have further conversations. So with that, Ms. Murray, please begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board recalls, back in December, you had this 23-year-old subdivision plan presented to you requesting certification of the board at that time. And for various reasons, primarily being the fact that the board did not have a copy of a file to which to compare the plan that was presented to it. The board voted to deny certification of that plan so that it could not go forward with being recorded at the registry. But furthermore, the board also voted to hold this hearing to consider either modifying or rescinding the subdivision. Now, since our hearing in December, we've obviously received our copy of the lawsuit from the developers that's pending with the land court. But still, this hearing goes forward tonight. We've also had a chance to dig a little bit deeper into the status of some of the town's files on this matter. We still, we've confirmed that the planning board file was destroyed with the permission of the Secretary of State's office in 2013. But luckily, the town clerk's office does have minutes which we've been able to go through. Some of them, I don't know that it's a fully exhaustive list just yet. And the town clerk was able to locate one file. And I can tell you, the file consisted of the original 1996 subdivision plan. It consisted of the Form 4, which was just the application. It consisted of the 100-year flood plain and stormwater report that had been prepared by CAR laboratories. And it also had an environmental impact report. That is the sum total of it, of the town clerk's file. So looking at this, this kind of leaves the board tonight, where you know, your considerations are, one, to modify the plan. And we can talk about what modification could look like, but as the name implies, it would be a modification with an eye towards the plan, keeping its status as a quote unquote improved plan. Or the other option is to rescind it altogether. And if the board is to rescind it, we do need to state reasons in the record as to why we would rescind it. Now, a moment ago, I said whether or not this plan retains its status as an approved plan because I think that is somewhat of a debatable status to assign to this plan. The original filing goes back to 1996. Minutes reflect that in 1997, there was a request to withdraw a plan without prejudice. At some point, a 1998 plan comes back for consideration. We don't have all of the records to suggest that all of the prerequisites of the subdivision control law were complied with. Namely, anytime a subdivision plan is filed, it's supposed to be submitted to the Board of Health for a report or recommendation. We've only been able to locate one set of minutes germane to this timeframe with respect to a Board of Health filing, and that goes back to 1998. So we don't have anything from 1996 or when the plan was under consideration from 96 to 97. My understanding is the Board of Health did have something relative to 2006, which is a time when the developer submitted a six lot subdivision for this same property. But here we are in 2022, and in 2021, the applicant was asking this board to certify the 23 lot subdivision. So I can't really give you much history behind the six lot subdivision. I can tell you that the 19, that on October 7, 1998, the planning board at the time did approve a 23 lot subdivision. There were waivers that were stated and there were some conditions attached to that approval. When you look at the plan that was presented to the board in November, December of last year for certification, that plan, number one, had a number of revision dates on it that ran through, I believe, February of 1999. We have not been able to match up minutes of the various board meetings to confirm many of those dates of revision. We, the face of that cover page of that set of plans that was presented to you notes six waivers on the face of it. Comparing that to the October 1998 Planning Board decision, three of the waivers noted on the cover page of that subdivision are not even mentioned in the planning board's decision. So I don't know if there was a subsequent request for further waivers. We simply don't have that record. Another prerequisite, obviously, is a request, the applicant is supposed to present some form of surety to ensure that the subdivision roadway would actually be constructed per the plan. The statute requires the planning board is not supposed to endorse the plan until such time as that surety has been provided. We have checked with the treasurer's office. There is no record of a surety having been presented there. Some of the minutes refer to a covenant, so it's possible that the form of surety intended was to be a covenant. The covenant was supposed to have been reviewed and approved by town council before any documents were signed, again, per the planning board minutes. But we don't have any indication that the covenant was presented to town council, that it was approved, or that there was any kind of report presented to the planning board to ultimately go ahead and sign the plan. What we also have discovered is that, and a butter to the property at 604 Jerusalem Road, I believe the name, it's Kenneth and Deborah Brewer. No relation to the planning board member, as he's disclosed. But they filed an appeal of the subdivision approval. That appeal, according to the Norfolk Superior Court Docket, was not resolved, or I should say, the judgment of dismissal did not issue until March of 2002. If we go and look at the face of the planning board of, sorry, if we look at the face of the subdivision plan, it bears the signature of a single person, that being the chair. And it appears to have been dated. Again, this is difficult to read with the digital version. But it looks to me like the date appears to be April of 1999. And I submit to you that, first of all, April of 1999, the chairman could not have signed the plan because it was still under appeal at that time. because it was still under appeal at that time. More importantly, the subdivision control law requires that a plan be endorsed by a majority of the Planning Board unless there is a vote of the Planning Board authorizing the chair or a clerk to, or some other designate to sign the subdivision plan. We've looked at that online, that vote is supposed to be on record at the Registry of Deeds. We have not been able to locate it. I checked with Lauren Lind. She doesn't have any record of such a vote having been taken. So there's a question as to whether or not that signature by the chairman, whether that was sufficient or even appropriate, given the timing of it. So all of this raises more questions rather than answers at this point. With respect to the plan, so as I see it this evening, the board can either modify the plan, and that would be perhaps looking at whatever prerequisite such as a surety you would want to impose upon a modified plan. And it would also include, I would imagine, wanting to look at a review of if this plan were presented to the board today, what additional types of safeguards would the board put in place? Or let's also nail down these waivers because I, as I said, I, I don't have any record of the Planning Board having approved all of the waivers as presented on the face of the plan. If, the, the other option, of course, is rescission. And as I said, the, the case law requires that rescission be for good cause. I've laid out some of the deficiencies that I certainly see, at least with the statute as, as well as process, that certainly seem to indicate that there are some deficiencies with the plan that has been presented to the board. And I know that Lauren Lind has gone through and has prepared at least an initial review of some changes with respect to zoning or the subdivision regulations that, you know, may, the board may consider to be substantive when we view this subdivision today. One thing I do want to point out to folks is that, you know, when the subdivision was filed and then subsequently approved. By state law, they enjoy an eight-year zoning freeze from the date of the original filing forward. But when there is an appeal that is presented, that zoning freeze, excuse me, is also extended based on the amount of time it takes to resolve that appeal. The Brewers' appeal was resolved as of March of two thousand two. Even if we added an eight-year zoning freeze to that, that brings us to two thousand ten. And as I mentioned, you know, we all know that this was presented to the board twelve years later. So with that, I guess I, I would hand it over to Lauren unless the board has any questions from me at this juncture.
Let me just say that if the board will please bear with me, I'd like to allow Ms. Lynn to speak as well as the applicant, and then the Planning Board will speak because that'll be a very efficient way. So Ms. Lynn, please proceed.
Thank you all. First, I'm going to go over some, just a quick zoning analysis of the site and give you some history of changes that have occurred since this plan was approved. Just so for background information, this, this site is approximately four to five acres of undeveloped land split between Residence B and Residence C districts. We do know from our available maps and our town G I S database that there's presence of wetlands on site. Potential locations of vernal pools, and our aerial imagery depicts that there's somewhat heavy vegetation on the site. This, as you already heard the application history, I won't go over that in more detail, but some bylaw changes that have occurred since nineteen ninety-eight that would impact current-day development for a property of, you know, any property of this nature include the stormwater management bylaw, which was established via town meeting in two thousand eight. It establishes the Conservation Commission jurisdiction for regulated activities pursuant to the Federal Clean Water Act. We also have the introduction to our zoning bylaws, inclusionary zoning that applies for any residential development containing five or more units within any district. And our scenic roads bylaw, that one of them is Jerusalem Road, so that may also impact this lot. And then you also have land alteration, both the, the two pieces, one that was passed at annual town meeting regarding tree clearance, as well as the most recent portion for ledge, exposed face ledge protection. And then last, I just want to note the rules and regulations. So the Planning Board rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land originally were effective in nineteen fifty-four, subsequently revised in nineteen eighty-nine, and then again in November of two thousand sixteen. And I did do an analysis to compare the two, the nineteen eighty-nine and two thousand sixteen version to go through and see what might be, you know, some more substantive changes. While there are a lot of ministerial and sort of language modifications, there are also several that I flagged for counsel and your purposes to take a look at. And I'll just quickly run through these, it's a bulleted list. There's a requirement, of course, for filing at the Registry of Deeds. There is a section that adds consideration for consultants and fees for peer review. A certification of compliance is required, is required for an application that would certify, certify compliance with our rules and regulations, zoning bylaws, subdivision control law. It adds new requirements for utilities, grading, drainage. New figures that go along with those for our change in minimum standards for dimensions between infrastructures, subgrade, as well as mass-up pipe construction standards. It does include a new reference to vernal pools, which we previously didn't see in the version from the eighties. It also adds specific language that there's an ability to condition approval such that if construction and installation of ways and utilities within a two-year period was incomplete, it would automatically rescind the approval without further action of the board. We see introduction of new performance guarantee criteria, sort of a first introduction of consideration of sustainable development principles and reference to our open space and recreation plan. As well as consideration for emergency turning vehicle radius and roadway foundation specs, as well as last but not least, requirement for a written waiver request, which as we know in our case history, looking at this site would have been quite helpful in understanding the history of what had happened between the iterations of plans. So with that, I'll conclude my summary of modifications to the zoning bylaws and the rules and regulations that you might want to consider as you think about maybe modifying or rescinding this plan. So thank you.
Thank you. Grady, if you would hold your comments so that we can hear from the applicant. That would be really helpful, and I want the public to know that after the applicant speaks, Ms. Lynn will explain how the public can participate in the conversation. So with that, Mr. Buckley, would you like to make a comment? You're muted, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I appreciate the summary from Town Council. But that does not negate the fact that I believe that opposition is that we have an endorsed subdivision. Whether the person was authorized or not, the town records apparently don't seem to allow that to be determined at this juncture, but the plan, had we recorded it initially, it would have been recorded and it would have it bore the, the signature of the chairman of the Planning Board at the time. So opposition is that it was duly authorized and executed. With respect to the security, under the Subdivision Control Act. Security for the performance of the obligations to, for the layout of the roads and the utilities is at the applicant's choice. So you can either do cash, a surety, or a covenant. The, the endorsed plan does indicate that a covenant is to be executed. And while our records don't seem to have it, I'm not sure, obviously, I wasn't involved at the time, whether that was provided, but if you want a covenant to secure the performance of the obligations under the subdivision plan. We'd be more than happy to execute the, the town standard covenant with respect to subdivision compliance. And I don't think that's an unreasonable request. Counsel is correct with respect to the appeal. Tolls and his zoning freeze during the pendency of that appeal, but more importantly. One of the conditions in the endorsed decision of the Planning Board at the time that was filed the next day with the town clerk. The first condition of the subdivision approval is to tie into the town sewer. And there's, there was no availability, or that was an impossibility of condition at the time. The Subdivision Control Act also extends its zoning freeze that during that period of time when one cannot tie into municipal services such as sewer. So to the extent that the sewer was not available, that condition required us to tie it to sewer. Until that sewer is available for us to tie in, the freeze that was effectuated by the subdivision would continue. And I think that's established law. You know, there are, granted, there's, there's a tremendous amount of time that lapsed. Whereas puzzled as, as perhaps the board is as to why, what occurred. But I think that in order to rescind a subdivision or revoke a subdivision, there has to be a basis that it can be that you just don't like it or times have changed at the time of approval and the record as it stands now is being assumed that these things didn't occur. It's just as likely they did occur. So we're at a quandary. So our position is that the subdivision was duly executed, is valid. And any freeze that was effectuated by it is likely still in effect because of the, the moratorium or the prohibition on satisfying the conditions of that approval, which first and foremost is tying into the town sewer. So with that, I'll just, I'll stop. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Buckley. I'd like to ask Lauren Lynn now to please give the public instructions of how they can communicate. They will be speaking after the Planning Board members.
Thank you. So we would ask that you insert your name and address into the question and answer function at the bottom of the screen. You can either leave written comments there, or you can indicate that you'd like to address the board. And we will promote you to use your camera and speaker at that time. We ask that we keep comments to a three-minute maximum per person, and please try not to repeat items that have already been stated and keep topics to the discussion at hand. Thank you.
All right. I will now call on the Planning Board members alphabetically, starting with Mr. Clark Brewer.
Grady had his hand up first, so if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Thanks, Clark. I do appreciate that. You know, just looking at this and hearing a couple of these, and listening to Lauren, listening to Carolyn, and listening to Mr. Buckley. There are just far too many inconsistencies in this application. So we're twenty-four years old. There's information that can't be found, information that's vague. You have an approval signed by a single member who happened to be the chair again. But bylaws have changed and you know, my instinct here is I want to file a motion to rescind and allow the applicant to reapply with, to use an act of ducks in a row. But using what we have for existing bylaws, again, too many things have changed. There's too many inconsistencies, missing information, information that can't be found, can't be supplied. So at this point, I'm filing a motion to rescind.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. With that, I'm going to proceed to still call on the Planning Board members and leave that active. Mr. Brewer?
So you're going to leave that motion? It hasn't been seconded.
We can come back to it.
But, but we, but I think it makes sense to get everybody's comments. Paul, would you mind?
Just leave it hang out there. We can come back to it. So make your comments.
Brewer, proceed.
Right. So this is, this is a big project, the forty-something acres, twenty-three lots with wetlands and you know, it has a huge impact on this part of Cohasset. I, I, I really think that, that the, that the burden is on the applicant to make sure that if if a chairman was duly authorized to endorse the subdivision, that, that, that applicant has that documentation. And, and I think the burden is on them, not on the town, even though the town has looked for that documentation. I, I think that it's, it's, the burden is on the, the, the developer or applicant's team to, to follow up in a timely manner, but I, based on what counsel has told us. I don't think we have an approved subdivision to rescind. I mean, I guess I, rescission is, maybe that's the right way to go about it. But if, if it's, if it's, if it was under appeal in two thousand two and it was signed in ninety-nine, then we don't have an approved subdivision, period. So how do we rescind that? Now, on the applicant's side, there's a tremendous amount of documentation that they've put together. They've probably learned a lot about the site through Concom. Perhaps Board of Health and, and I can't confirm that, and through their process with the, with the Planning Board back in the nineties. And, and so I, I think that there's, there's really no option for the applicant other than to to refile to refile or create a new filing for this, this area. And, and I think that a lot of the best practices in stormwater management and, but just all the things that mean being a good neighbor would make a big difference. The equity picture from, compared to now from ninety-nine. I think allows the, the developer the ability to understand that, that, that those extra precautions to make an excellent neighborhood and to be an excellent neighbor for the people that live around this particular lot, that the opportunity is, is there. I, I just think, I, I don't, I don't see that we have something to rescind. But I mean, I suppose we could have a motion that if this is a subdivision, that's, that's, that was approved twenty-three years ago, we would rescind it. Because I, from what I've heard, I don't, I don't think we have an approved subdivision here.
All right, Mr. Brewer. We'll also come back to you. Mr. Callahan?
That wasn't a motion. I was just making a suggestion.
Thank you.
Well, I think for, for our board and every planning board in the state, as a matter of principle. We can't condone approving a plan twenty-four years after the fact. The reason we're here is because the applicant failed to record a plan within six months under the statute. The applicant failed to provide surety. We're not here in the business to relieve the applicant of their mistakes. And I think it would be horrible precedent if we did. And, you know, this is, I, I wish I could remember this. I'm the only one here who was on a board at the time. I was on Concom when this project started in ninety-six. I don't think I was there when Concom made its decision, but I, my understanding is Concom essentially denied this project, and there was a court action, and that ended in two thousand five, I believe. The sewer issue, there may have been a moratorium, but I also, it's my understanding that Sewer Commission outright denied a connection at the time. There was litigation over that, and that ended in two thousand six. Then there is the issue that the applicant brought forward in the mid-two thousands, a second plan that I understand the Planning Board denied, but was for only eight lots. So I, you know, just the passage of twenty-four years is enough to, for me to say that this has been abandoned. But it was abandoned back in the two thousands when they came back with another plan because they were facing denials from the Sewer Commission and the Concom because of the, the, all the development that was involved with twenty-three lots that just couldn't, wasn't feasible. You know, and again, I, I just, I'm gonna end up seconding Paul's motion when it's appropriate to do so, and I'm prepared to offer some of the explanations for the decision, but I just don't see how, just on principle of twenty-four years, that any planning board can, can allow this to happen, especially with all the changes that have happened in the law. Case law, statutory law, bylaws, so I, I just, I can't see myself supporting any, anything other than rescission here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Potter?
I'm going to agree with the board in the comments made today by everybody else. I, I, I think the amount of years that has gone by is just a significant amount of years. It's not recent past. I have no knowledge of any thing that was done that would grandfather this in, this decision in. Or would require us to acknowledge it. So I would be of the position that if, if the board doesn't actively rescind it, then they, that, that the applicant by, by non-action abandoned the, the rights to move forward with the, the prior, prior decision. The, the rights to move forward with the, the prior, prior decision.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Potter. I appreciate that. Um, I agree with the comments that have been made by my colleagues on the planning board. So I'm not going to add any further information other than to say that the, the project never went before the um. Uh, Public Health Board, so that was a stop that was missed. Um, but what I'd like to do now is to turn to the public and allow them to provide some insights. So Lauren, can you please manage that?
Yes, thank you. So I will read the comments that have been written in to date. We have first Katie and Dave Dugan of one hundred Black Rock Road. Just here to listen to this. Patrick and Nicole Muller, a Windy Hill residents. Um, they write, hi, this is Patrick and Nicole Muller, residents of fifty nine Windy Hill Road. And concerned about the Jerusalem Road subdivision. How much of the natural forestation would remain with such a large development? Would any of the land remain undeveloped? Very concerned about the wildlife impact. Thank you. Lindy Fitzgerald of thirty nine Windy Hill Road, I respectfully second Mr. Grady's motion to rescind. We cannot allow an approval. If there ever even was an actual approval from twenty four years ago to be upheld, it's ludicrous. Um, Kelly Dunn of fifty three Windy Hill here. No questions at this time. Wanted to note for the record Chad Gutner and Kelly Dunn were here. We're very concerned about this potential development in our backyard. Virginia Jensen of five forty two Jerusalem Road, resurrecting something this old and outdated is not something for this area at this time. I agree the burden is on the applicant to follow up in timely manner. In addition, the access road, Black Rock Road is substandard, less than twelve. Feet in certain areas. Nothing about the proposal is reasonable. Um, Mel Seaborn, no address. Michael and Sherry Hefner, no address. Jill and Reed Smith, forty seven Black Rock Road. Twenty eight Black Rock Road, Michael Hefner respectfully seconds motion. Mel Seaborn, six hundred Jerusalem Road, were concerned as abutters that we had no voice in this plan. And as we were not abutters at the time of the plan, very concerned about this development. Jill Smith and Jeffrey Chubb of fifty six Black Rock Road, no questions this time. We are very concerned about this development. We agree that this development should be rescinded. And Nicole Berg of forty five Windy Hill Road here to listen. I'm not seeing any other comments in the Q and A at this time, so I will turn it back to the chair.
Madam Chair, may I make one quick comment before you take your action?
Uh, yes, Mr. Buckley.
I would just like the record to reflect the fact that, oh, while the plan may have been signed by the chairman, which I. You know, I do a lot of zoning or land use. Um, it's not unusual to designate an individual as, as counsel indicated to, to sign. Um, whether that has been found in the town's records, um. I can't comment, but there seems to be a lot of things that I filed, but one thing we did find was an actual vote. Of the planning board to close the public hearing and to actually vote affirmatively on a three-two vote. To approve the subdivision and that was filed with the town clerk on the next day, uh, October eighth nineteen ninety eight. So to say that when there was never a subdivision or there was not a subdivision. The actual vote of the board is on record with the, the official record keeper of the, the municipality. So there is evidence that there was an approval of the subdivision. And I would submit that the moratorium, some of the conditions pro- prohibited the exit, the execution of the subdivision and. As a consequence, so leads to some vested protection. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Grady?
Just to be brief, uh, I know when we sign approval, we all have to sign it. We take the vote, we sign. Um, that's not an accusation, but there's a misstep someplace. So that's where I'll repeat my motion. Is you start fresh, come before the board and uh, we move from there. And that's why my motion.
Uh, Mr. Callahan?
I, I, I just want to make the point that I'm operating from the assumption that there was a subdivision approval. I, I, I mean, whether it was valid or not, I, it doesn't excuse Attorney Buckley, your client's. Failure to do what it had to do to protect its own interests. And again, I don't think we're here to, to bail them out of that. Uh, and, and again, I, on the sewer point, I think there's a big difference between a moratorium. And an outright denial of a connection, which is what I understand the Sewer Commission did and that, that led to litigation. Which ultimately was resolved or settled in the town's favor or resolved in the town's favor. I'm gonna, right now, I'll officially second Paul's motion. Uh, I'm prepared to offer some reasoning if that's necessary, uh, whenever, whenever you'd like.
May I um, just step back for one minute, Mr. Callahan, and ask Ms. Murray if she has any additional comments she'd like to make?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I don't have any additional comments to make. I just, and it sounds like Mr. Callahan might be headed in this direction. Uh, just ask the board that um, the motion be supported by um, some findings that we could actually put into a decision.
All right. Thank you. I, I think that that was the direction that um, Mr. Callahan was going, I'm gonna guess. So uh, would you like to offer some comments, Mr. Callahan, regarding uh, conditions for um, the seconding of the denial?
Is somebody writing this down?
If Tom could um, make a, make a new motion with his um, conditions, that would probably be the, the easiest thing. Uh, for um, taking a vote.
All right. Is Lauren, is somebody, are you taking this all down? So.
Yes, we have Angela here and I will also take it down.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion that we rescind. The subdivision decision of what is it, October eighth nineteen ninety eight? Is that the night, date of it? For six oh two Jerusalem Road?
I second it.
On the following conditions that I have and that anybody else on the board wishes to add to. My first condition would be that uh, by reason of the applicant's own. Actions, inactions and or negligence in failing to record the plan. Uh, provide necessary surety and any other uh, acts or omissions that it was supposed to take that it didn't take at the time. Uh, the second grounds would be abandonment. Of the project, both by reason of the subsequent subdivision filing in the mid two thousands. And by the mere passage of twenty four years. Um, another condition, another reason would be um. This is, this is lawyer talk. It's related to abandonment, but it's the equitable principle of latches, L A C H E S. Which, which is uh, basically you, you sit on your rights, you lose your rights. So, but those would be my conditions. Uh, I leave it to the fellow members to add any others that you think are appropriate or, or to counsel to add what's appropriate.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other member of the board that would like to add additional conditions?
I mean, I mean, I'll, I'll add whatever thing Carolyn said earlier too, I, but I, I. Not can't sit here and repeat everything she said, but the defects that she found earlier would be an additional uh, condition for rescission.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grady.
And I would add, I would parrot Tom by adding what Carolyn put, also what Clark put and what Eric put. As a matter of fact, the board as a whole. Um, and that's why I filed the motion in the first place, but Tom, I happily second it if we're going that route.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Brewer, do you have any comments?
No, but uh, the motion's been made and seconded. I vote aye.
Um, thank you. Um, Mr. Callahan?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll vote aye unless there's any other discussion people want to have about it, but if we're ready to vote aye. All right.
So, uh, Mr. Grady?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye. Thank you.
Good God.
All right. Um, thank you. Uh, also on behalf of the board for the public's sentiments and views of the situation. We're now going to move to an item um, that was originally scheduled at seven twenty. We're not doing too badly on time. Which is a discussion of a lot release request, lot number six of Heritage Lane subdivision. Continued from twelve fifteen twenty one. And let me ask if uh, Lauren would like to speak to this?
Certainly. Thank you. So I'm, just for the record, I'm promoting Gregory Morse from Morse Engineering on behalf of the applicant. And then we also have uh, Jim Reardon of Weston and Sampson, who's a peer review engineer for the town, both here tonight to speak to this application. So we received this um, application about a month and a half ago, I'll say now in a ballpark. It was the request to release the final lot that's being held in a subdivision known as Heritage Lane. This subdivision was approved in the early two thousands and it has been, since been a period of time since. There'd been a couple of lots released in previous iterations as the project was moving forward. Now the project is at its final stage and they're looking to have this lot released so that they can proceed with development of that final lot and subdivision. We received the request from um, Greg Morse and what we had asked at the time is because there had been a punch list of outstanding items. From um, the board's former peer review, uh, Mr. John Majaluski from back in two thousand eleven that had uh, been unanswered. We asked that as a starting point, the applicant provide responses to where that letter had left off to continue this review. So they did such and that was reviewed by Jim Reardon of Weston and Sampson. There is um, some conversation and now we're here tonight to hear from. Both uh, the applicant and the peer review as to where we stand and then the board can make a decision as to where we go with the request for a lot release.
Um, do, Mr. Morse, would you like to speak?
Sure. Thank you. For the record, Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer, Morse Engineering. Representing the property owner and applicant Anthony Nader um, of Highland Estates LLC. Um, as Ms. Lynn just stated, this was a subdivision that was originally approved in two thousand five. It was a sixteen lot subdivision located off of Beechwood Street. Um, my client substantially completed construction of the road in about two thousand eleven. And since that time has built on fifteen of the sixteen lots. There, lot six is the only lot that remains in its original condition. The applicant had put up lot six as surety for the subdivision project to guarantee the construction. Of the road and installation of the utilities. Um, that is all complete at this point. In two thousand and eleven, John Majaluski of Civil Designs Inc. Um, reviewed as-built plans that were previously submitted, uh, performed a site visit. And came up with a list of punch list items for the subdivision to be considered complete. Since two thousand and eleven, my client has substantially completed all of those punch list items. Uh, we submitted a letter documenting that those items had been done. Um, and in the areas that they haven't, uh, we feel that. Uh, what is out there is, is in substantial compliance. Um, and meets the intent of your subdivision rules and regs. So we've requested the release for lot six. Again, lot six was the lot that was held as your surety. It's the only remaining lot at this point. Um, my client takes great pride in the subdivision. He feels that it's come out very nicely. The landscape is matured. The homes are a, a nice addition to the neighborhood. Uh, if you've driven through there, we hope that you would agree. I turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you. Um, Mr. Reardon, would you like to um, provide some commentary on behalf of the town?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. Good evening, uh, Chair Glassmire and uh, members of the planning board. Uh, I have a brief presentation to go through. My apologies for remaining dark screen tonight. Um, my internet connection is a little bit spotty and uh, has been kind of going in and out uh, when uh, when I have video up. Um, so we were of course asked to uh, review this uh, subdivision by the town. Um, and uh, for bond release and uh, prepared a peer review memo. Uh, that was dated seven fourteenth. As was mentioned previously, there are a number of uh, punch list items to be addressed. Um, in general summary here, we believe that the following punch list items have been addressed. One to three, five to nine, eleven to sixteen. Then were several that were listed under seventeen. So we think seventeen one, seventeen two, and seventeen four have been addressed as well as eighteen to twenty one. So that leaves uh, three items that have yet to be addressed. Include uh, the stormwater forbay, uh, the formed inverts uh, for manholes under item ten. And the berm around the detention basin. I'll give a little more detail on that. So um, uh, to make this determination, we looked at materials that we received from the town. Uh, between November and uh, December when we conducted our review, they include the uh, five listed here. This is also listed in our peer review, so I won't go over them individually. Um, we'll point out that.
I just started.
We will point out that detention pond two, item four in the punch list. That the forbay on sheet eleven was found, uh, was not found in the field. This was noted on a previous review. Um, we would recommend that the applicant should install forbay or explain its absence. So looking at this plan, there's, there's no, there's no.
Sorry, Jim. Jim, what's a forbay? For those of us who don't know what it is?
Sure. So generally speaking, when you have a, a stormwater best management practice, you have a, a treatment component. You have pre-treatment and then you have whatever kind of uh, outlet control for peak flows. Uh, that are included and that might be part of the treatment component. The, a forbay is a pre-treatment component. It's designed to capture. Uh, most of the large sediment particles and um, uh, things like floatable litter and stuff like that. Um, in uh, the case of a detention basin, it's usually uh, a pooling area. That might be included before the rest of the detention basin. So uh, hopefully you can see my, my cursor here. Uh, Clark?
Yeah.
Typically you might, so this is the, this is the inlet pipe and that's the outlet. Uh, which you can tell based on the invert elevations and this is the overflow. So the overflow is for uh, peak flow control. The outlet is generally, you know, this is for, uh, I should say this for peak flow control in an emergency. Uh, say when you're getting over a hundred year storm. The remainder of flows are controlled through um, this uh, outlet box. And through this pipe and then at the inlet here, you'll notice that there is um. Uh, probably uh, a riprap uh, pad that's designed to dissipate energy a bit. And then typically you might find like sort of a uh, berm or a wall along here essentially. Wall for lack of a better term. Um, that uh, holds back some of the flow initially so that as, as I was mentioning. Uh, larger uh, floatables and uh, sediment particles get trapped. Sorry, my cursor went away. Get trapped in this area and you can clean them out and they don't clog up the rest of the treatment unit. So you might see this uh, as being uh, uh, an excavated area here with um. Cursor one way again, an excavated area in here with sort of a uh, short berm. Um, with maybe a wear wall or something of that nature to control flows. That's the sort of thing that's really up to the engineer to include. Another way to deal with pre-treatment might be to do something like install um, uh, an energy dissipator or. Uh, hydrodynamic uh, separator in this area. You know, more commonly those go by the name like a vortex unit or something like that. Um, does that give a pretty good explanation for you?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Um, so uh, as mentioned on the slide, forbays are required for pre-treatment. They're required uh, by the state. Um, and uh, the state standard is what you folks use for stormwater BMPs general. So again, that's missing here. Uh, another item was uh. At the manhole having formed inlets. This isn't a, this isn't one at this particular site. This is an example of one. And you can see that uh, there is a formed piece of, in this case, uh, looks like iron. That uh, curves up over the um, uh, the concrete uh, uh, concrete curbing. Like Kitco sort of curbing in this area. And uh, that, the way that's formed, the way it is uh, shaped to fit directly with um, uh, with the curb. That's, that's referred to as a uh, formed inlet. Um, and so these are not technically, it's not really a performance issue. Uh, it, you know, for a site, but they do look pretty. So it's really primarily for aesthetics and. Uh, probably shouldn't use this term, but curb appeal. Um, so uh, in this case, it was stipulated uh, as. Uh, as a requirement uh, in the approval and it was one of the punch list items. Um, and these haven't been installed. Um, and then last, uh, this is uh, back to the um, to the stormwater detention system. So uh, there's a berm there that is low in some places. Uh, it was supposed to be uh, um. It's supposed to be installed so that uh, it would contain flow. Um, we did notice that there is no bit, because we did a site visit. That there is no visible erosion problem or anything of that nature. There's no evidence of overtopping of the berm. Uh, so uh, it appears to be functioning uh, okay, but um, there were no stormwater calculations that were provided. To review uh, the claim of proper functioning and generally we would want to see those to show. That the uh, that uh, the flows that are anticipated during various storms. Uh, that they are able to be handled by the system that's put in place. Um. So those are, uh, those are the three items uh, on the punch list that the um, we found haven't been included yet. Uh, otherwise, um, things looked okay to us.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reardon. Um, would any of the members of the planning, let me ask, Mr. Morse, would you like to respond?
Ye- yes, thank you very much. Um, those three items, uh, if we start with the forbay. Um, specifically, we're talking about when you drive up the subdivision, it's the, the detention basin that's on lot one, which is the. Uh, second lot on the left-hand side. This project started by a, by a previous engineer, Neil J. Murphy Associates. And back when the road was constructed two thousand ten, two thousand eleven and as-built was submitted that indicated that a forbay had been constructed. Within that detention basin area. Um, since then, that property lot one has, has conveyed. And the homeowner has gone in and done substantial landscaping on their land, including on the berm and immediately surrounding the detention basin. Um, I agree and have documented that if you go out there today, there is no forbay present. Um, but what is present is significant vegetation that's grown in the detention basin area. That I feel serves the same purpose essentially as a forbay itself. The vegetation that's established itself now. Um, is certainly thick enough that it's going to promote sediment fallout. So that you're not going to get overflow of sediment through the detention basin and into the outlet structure on the other side. I think the vegetation that's there um, is substantial and would save, would serve the same purpose as if a forbay had been constructed or, or was present there today. Um, again, I note that former asphalt that was submitted to this board did indicate that it was there at one point in time. Um, but it appears to have been removed by the owner of that lot at this point.
All right, thank you.
I, you want me to address each of those three items?
Please, I, yes.
Sure. The, the second one, I, I believe the peer reviewer. Was a little incorrect in the PowerPoint presentation that was just presented on item two, which was the forming of the inverts. Of the drainage manholes. He was showing a picture of formed inlets at the grates of the catch basins. That is not the requirement of the Tonaco acid, but I believe what he was trying to refer to was in the drain manholes in the street. Under, underground in the bottom of the manhole and the invert of the manhole. The, your regulations require that concrete and brick be placed to help direct the stormwater from one pipe into the next pipe. The plans that were approved by this board have specific construction details on them that did not include that as a requirement. So. The plans that are signed by the planning board do not have formed inverts as a requirement. But your subdivision rules and regulations do have it as a requirement. So there was a little bit of an error there and those plans should not have been approved without that requirement stated on them on the construction details. The drain manholes have been in place since the road was built in two thousand eleven. Um, eleven years ago at this point, there have been no issues with not having the inverts in place. Um, I would say the inverts aren't in place on drain manholes throughout the Tonaco acid. Um. You know, you don't see formed inverts on many drainage projects. That would not impact the overall design of the system. Um, and then item number three, which is the stormwater basin, again, on that lot. Uh, on the left, as you go up the subdivision road where the owner has done extensive landscaping. There are a couple of spots on the berm surrounding the detention basin that are approximately five inches low in elevation. I would note however, that the hundred year storm event is contained within the basin. It's been in existence for eleven years without any problems of overtopping. Uh, or any erosion of any of the berms. It appears to be functioning one hundred percent per design, even though. Uh, in a couple of spots, it is up to five inches low in elevation on that berm. Um, that berm does not serve as a wear elevation. It's completely controlled by the outlet control structures in the. Emergency overflow uh, riprap, which again, that berm does not impact. So. I, tho- those are my quick comments on the three outstanding items that were addressed in the peer review.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Reardon, would you would like to have any comments?
Um, yeah, as, as far as punch list item ten, the second one in the list, uh. Uh, Mr. Morse is correct. That should have been formed inverts and not formed inlets. I just went back and took a look through the peer review. And that was, uh, that was my error, uh, that it was listed as uh, inlets in the PowerPoint as opposed to inverts. Um, as far as the first item goes, uh, the pre-treatment. Um, we would, we would want to see for um, for the purposes of making sure. That the pre-treatment is uh, is in compliance and meets the standards, Massachusetts standards and your town standards. We would want to see documentation of uh, of. What Mr. Morse was referring to as providing something substantially similar to pre-treatment. Um, so what he described, I think is a little unusual for pre-treatment, but we'd be certainly happy to take a look at that. Um, if you would like us to. And then uh, item, the last item seventeen three. Uh, regarding the um, you know, the uh, the berm. Um. The, again, we would, we would want to see calculations that support the claim that uh, that this will function properly. Um, the way it is currently, as, as he points out, there isn't evidence of uh, failure. But that's not the same thing as confirming it through the calculations, which is really the standard.
All right, thank you. Um, do any of the planning board members wish to comment? Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, I think with these matters, we rely on our consultant to um. Uh, confirm that everything's done and the expectation is that the applicant um, developer. Dot their i's and cross their t's to the extent um, required by the, by the um. By our consultant. He's our eyes and ears on projects like this and. His expectations for compliance with whatever's in the, in the um. Uh, approved plans or uh, would be a reasonably good practice. Uh, would be ours is in my estimation. Uh, so uh, substantial. Uh, substantially complete or mostly done, or it got changed over the years. I, I just don't think. Uh, un- unless, unless the applicant's team wants to uh, really address um. An alternate method than what was on the approved plans. Then my expectation would be to, to hold the lot until everything is done to our consultant's satisfaction. But uh, certainly open to discuss that on the board.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Mr. Grady?
I would actually second what Clark was saying. Uh, actually, he took the windray out of my sails on that one. So I agree with him wholeheartedly. Um, and uh, you know, I'd be inclined to approve if the conditions were Mr. The, Mr. Reardon laid down were met. But until then, I'd have to have some second thoughts about that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grady. Mr. Callahan?
Uh, I, I mean, just generally speak, this is the first time I've dealt with a lot release since I'm on this board, but you know, just generally speaking, I think. We should have strict compliance with the conditions we issue, whether it's on a subdivision, special permit, anything. So uh. If, if our applicant, eh, if our uh, consultant believes that we need to have these things done, I, I agree and I don't. Just like the thing we dealt with before this one, uh, the passage of time isn't an excuse for anything here and I think we should have compliance uh. With the, with the original conditions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Potter?
I have an thing for it to add on top of what's already been said. Um. I, I think that uh, that's why we have these third parties to advise us on these matters. So. It makes sense to me to follow what they're advising and to get that before making decisions.
No, and I will say one more, one more thing is i- if there's an, an alternative way of doing this forbay because the neighbors. Messed around with the vegetation. Um, that is acceptable to our consultant, then. And I would expect the applicant's engineer to make the case to the consultant so that the, our engineer is nodding. And then he can tell us everything's been taken care of, um, especially if it's a de minimis uh, change or, or this good and sufficient reasons for. Um, a slight modification in, but we, in the end, we, we want to see everything that was, that was um, on the approved drawings done. Unless there's a really good reason to do it a different way.
All right, thank you. So. Ms. Lynn, would you provide language for us to uh, segue to the next item?
Certainly. So this isn't a public hearing. There's no um, you know, definitive continuation to a time and date certain that's required of this, but. What I would do is suggest that we either plan to revisit this discussion. On February ninth to February sixteenth and I'll turn to um, Greg Morse actually to give me a preference on that.
If we can continue, well, February sixteenth, that'll give me time to respond to these three outstanding issues and. Uh, coordinate with your consultant.
Okay, that sounds great. Um, so we'll plan to revisit this discussion on February sixteenth at the planning board meeting. And in the meantime, um, I will work with the applicant and our peer review engineer, um, as well as John Helen to coordinate any. Discussions that need to take place in between now and then.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reardon. Thank you, Mr. Morse, and we will see you in a couple of weeks. All right. Thank you. Ms. Lynn, will you please um, tee, tee up the next uh, item?
Yes, thank you. So the next item on our agenda. For the next two items, I'll explain quickly. We have two items on the agenda. Both are uh, in reference to the property is twenty-six Lambert's Lane. We first have an A and R application for a division of one piece of property into uh, four proposed buildable lots. And that is accompanied by a common driveway application. The applicant intends to have a common drive to serve all. Of the house lots. This application, I'll note, um, the one that we had received for discussion tonight. Was the third iteration of previously incomplete and modified uh, plan sets. We have been working with the applicant closely, myself, John Howland, um, and other members in the planning and permits department to make sure. That this application addresses all the items that it needs to and that it's complete. The um, for example, the first iteration of A and R plan, um, while typically zoning is not a consideration of A and R. It's not a determination that the board is looking to make. When you have an application before you, as a courtesy, we did flag to the applicant that we noticed that the three. Lots um, in the back of the lot that he had created in that first layout would have rendered them unbuildable because they had. Provided a lot to no legal frontage. So we did flag that, um, you know, as, as a courtesy and we've been working with the applicant. So you'll hear. Uh, that this has been going on for quite a few weeks now and we continue to work with the applicant. We did receive as of yesterday, a fourth iteration. Of plan for both the A and R and the common driveway. And I will note that we have engaged um. Uh, Patrick Brennan from Amory Engineers as a peer review on this parcel. He had initially upon. Iteration number three of these plans, taken a look and done a completeness report to ask for some more information. To which uh, we got a response and the modified plans in iteration four as of yesterday um, from the applicant. So given that we had that. Uh, receipt of information so close to the meeting time and the crunch between. Review of staff, the planning board and our peer review engineer, we uh, reached out to the applicant and we are postponing these matters. To the February ninth meeting. Um, I can confirm that uh, the peer review. Report will be done today. Uh, I mean, this week, so I'll be able to, we'll be able to expedite that and continue this review in time for the ninth. With that said, you don't need to take any action on the common drive application because there's no public hearing required and we have some time to. Opine on that. The A and R application that was filed, um, there is a twenty-one day time clock that ticks on an A and R application. If we. Um, you have really three options here and I will ask counsel to step in and correct me. If I uh, misconstrue anything here, but your options really are to either uh, vote to endorse the plan, vote to. Uh, not withhold endorsement on the plan, but you would have to specify reasons as to why you were doing that, or you could take no action. Taking no action on the plan um, could result in a constructive approval because twenty-one days would have lapsed. From the filing of a plan and no planning board action. Um, I will note that, again, no matter what you do here. Whether you agree to endorse this plan, reconfigure the lots as such. The, it doesn't impact whether the lots are buildable. You're not making a determination on zoning because something that has been brought up by our peer review is whether the. Width providing for these lots will meet, um, you know, buildability requirements in town. That's yet to be determined, but that is something that will come and. Um, sort of if you approve lots like this, it's, it's not jeopardizing something for the town. It's actually would be sort of a, a harm on the. Applicant's intent of what he was trying to do. So we do know that we have a forthcoming new revised plan in both the common drive and A and R. So just uh, I'll, I'll lay all those pieces of facts out for you and I will. Pause and see if our uh, council has anything that she'd like to add to what I've outlined for the board here.
Marie?
Thank you. Lauren, just curious if, since this is the fourth iteration of the plan. Is the applicant willing to extend the twenty-one days for the board to act?
I would imagine that they would be. However, I don't have it in writing and I haven't had an opportunity to confirm that for the board for tonight's purposes.
Okay, so our twenty-one days is up, not counting the fourth, this fourth iteration of the plan, but on the. Plan that was in place before the fourth iteration, where were we in terms of the twenty-one days?
So um, I, let me double check. I believe it, I'll pull up my calendar and just to clarify, iteration one and two, because the applications were not complete, were not filed. So those plans, even though they were iteration one and two, are not considered, um, you know, live application was filed with our clerk due to incompleteness. We filed, um, oh, my calendar just went away. Okay. I believe uh, that we are on week two, uh, within a day or two of when the plan was filed. So if we were to continue this to the ninth, we would take past twenty-one days. From the date of filing.
Okay, um, then I suppose one other option for the board is um, you could. Vote to, um, you know, if the applicant is willing to grant an extension. Offline with, uh, directly with, with Lauren, you could also just continue this to your next meeting and in the alternative, deny it if there is no extension. Or you could just deny this particular iteration that's before you because you know, you're going to be looking at a new one.
All right, that seems to be pretty straightforward. Um, so Lauren, what do you think uh, the options are uh, negotiating with the applicant? To um, give us an extension that is necessary to be able to consider this without jeopardy? It's a little bit hard to ask you to, to stick your neck out and say, I'm sure I'm going to get it. So it sounds to me like. The safe course is to deny it and uh, know that we're going to be seeing the, the fourth iteration uh, at the next meeting.
Right. Well, you might look, what you, I, I could suggest that based on uh, lack of information at this time and with the understanding that you know. Uh, there's been modifications subsequent that you'll be looking at on the ninth.
All right. Does anyone like to speak about this? Mr. Brewer?
Well, uh, uh, I checked the town list and Lambert's Lane is indicated as a public way. Uh, even though it, it says right here on the plan, it's variable width, but it's not indicated as a, as a public way. But whether it's a public way or a private way, um, the four lots show over fifty feet of frontage. As this is a residence A district. Um, which is, which fifty feet is the requirement uh, for frontage. Um, it appears that there's, that there's access. Um, it appears that there's, that there's access where some of the lots actually seem to be in Lambert's Lane. So presumably that would provide access. Um, there's, there's another, the lots on the right-hand side appear to have some kind of a wedge shaped. Uh, space between the um, the actual roadway and their lot line. I don't know who owns that, if that's a part of the public way or not. I guess I would, um, if, if. If we're gonna deny because they're gonna get a new one, it would be useful for the applicant to get information on who owns that space. Um, since they may or may not have uh the right to cross up upon, go across it if it's not a part of the public way. Uh, but I see there's the potential for access on a public way and there's at least fifty feet of frontage. Um, th- there looks like all the lots meet zoning square footage. I just can't tell if they meet the lot width requirement, but if we're not gonna vote on it, or if we're gonna vote uh to deny endorsement. Then um, I guess it doesn't matter.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
And I don't think this applicant has given us any choice tonight but to to deny the application.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grady.
I would agree with Tom and Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
I agree with everybody.
All right. Thank you. I agree as well. So can I get a motion to deny?
I'll make the motion to deny.
Second.
All right, uh, roll call, Mr. Brewer.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Brady.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
You need Glassmire, aye. Thank you very much. All right. So uh we are really doing well on time tonight. So um, as we have previously organized our recent meetings. We can move directly into the next item, which is set as time for eight thirty P M. Is that correct, Lauren?
Yes, that's correct. It was continued to six thirty P M with the caveat that the advertised continuation time may not match the ad, the uh published time. So we are all in keeping to open reopen this public hearing at this time.
All right, um. With that, um, uh, Ms. Marie, do you have any uh introductory comments that you'd like to make about this?
Not at this time, manager.
All right, uh, then I will um ask, well, Mr. Callahan has gone away. I was going to ask Mr. Callahan if he'd like to um, uh, start the discussion on item. Public hearing pursuant to M M G L, chapter forty-one S eighty-one Q. For proposed amendments to the planning board rules and regulations for common driveway minimum standards. The proposal is to rescind the existing common driveway minimum standards to be replaced with new language titled residential property access regulations. Of the planning board for non-subdivision control ways. Thank you. Now, Mr. Callahan is uh back in in his chair and I would ask him to begin the conversation.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Amy. All right, so before us is the proposed. Uh, regulation on uh residential property access meant to uh expand upon and replace. Our existing common driveway regulations. Um, I'm looking at the redline version that uh came from Carolyn. Um, I have it up on my screen just so I can see it in large enough type. Um, I'm gonna work with the redline version because um. There's a number of comments by both myself and by Carolyn, and I think the best thing to do is to just uh go through this section by section. And um, as we go through each section, uh, so I would propose to solicit comments from other members of the board. And then members of the public uh going through it section by section. Um, so to begin, the first is the background and purpose. Uh, which we, I believe we have in the current regulation. But this explains uh the purpose of of this regulation. And in in the broad sense, you know, our our current regulation just regulates common driveways. Our subdivision control reg section, uh, cha- uh, chapter three twenty-five of our bylaws deals with subdivision roads. What we don't regulate is the private way that is something more than a common driveway, but not an approved subdivision road. So one of the purposes of these regulations is to uh, uh, address that gap. And and to put in some regulations for the many private roads in town that are not actually subdivision roads. Um, so with respect to the uh explanation, I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, Carolyn's changes to this section one are fine with me. I don't know. Again, I'll I'll open it up to anybody's comments about that. And I guess, you know, in following Amy's lead, we'll proceed in alphabetical order. I, I, well, all right. So Clark, anything on section one? Or anybody, anybody?
Um, well, I mean, uh, I I know you've been working on this stuff for for a while. It's 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 just that I I I see that this is um, uh, taking away um, sort of. Uh, flexibility that's inherent in the common driveway standards. Um, as well as grabbing more uh regulation on um private ways. That not the subdivision uh ways that are, that were not uh accepted as public ways. Like uh, like Hillside where where you live. Um, those seem to be adequately constructed and not have issues, but there's all these ways that predate zoning. That look like common driveways but aren't, you know, there might be twenty feet of 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 uh, of way to them. Uh, instead of the forty feet. And I think this overregulates the um. Uh, 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 an aspect of cohasset, a necessary aspect of cohasset uh planning. Um, uh, that responds to uh the environment that we have. Um, cohasset's not on a grid. And we have wetlands and and ledge. Um, I I would like to see a an update to our regulation. It's just that the the purpose, um. Uh, I, I I think there's th- th- that this needs some more work and and we don't seem to be. Um, representing best practices uh in those guides that I I referenced and forwarded. Well, I'm happy to to see what might make sense from a big picture. Um. Um, uh, but you, it seems like the regulation that you've drafted, Tom, it's 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 deep in the, in the nitty gritty. Uh, and I want to make sure that we have the big picture as well as the details correct and how much we're gonna regulate. So those would be my comments on number one.
All right, let me, let me, oh. I didn't want to bring this up, but I'm gonna bring it up. I I, the the zoning board turned down your special permit application. To build another house on this property. Are are you still pursuing that?
I'm not gonna comment on some other matter, Tom, but like I said, when we opened the hearing on uh common driveway standards. I have a lot. It's protected under Mass General Law eighty-one, uh, forty-one, eighty-one F F. As an approved subdivision and in the late forties, a land court judge approved access. Via something called the traveled way.
Okay.
My, my, my access to my lot, that's, that's, actually, it's already developed lot. It just doesn't have a house on it. Is not affected by anything that you do here.
I would disagree with that, but um.
Well, land court does receive planning board and I'm sorry if you did, if you don't believe that.
Eric, Eric, I know you wanted to say something.
Uh, yes, and and I changed my background because I saw Clark and Amy's were blurred, so I just wanna.
I made sure we weren't gonna disappear and you were going to go to the beach.
That's where I'd like to be right now, but that's a, that's a different story. Um, so, so generally speaking, I I don't want to get clouded by uh. By Clark's, I I don't even know the specifics of it all, but I don't want the board to get clouded by this. I think my 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 bigger concern may be the one that we perhaps should discuss. And and that's the fact that we do have this comprehensive zoning bylaw review coming up. My concern with these regulations is is number one, um, perhaps perception uh of of how. This will be received by the, by the general public uh by taking regulations at the hand. For, I know this frustrates you, Tom, but but if we do have a zoning bylaw review coming up and a comprehensive review coming up. My question would be, and I'd like someone to give me a a direct answer to this. Why would we do anything with regards to zoning when it's already been something that's been discussed at at town meeting? That there's going to be a comprehensive resu- review of the zoning bylaws without some sort of palpable. Or or identifiable emergency in place or 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 public need to review of specific bylaw. And no one seems to be able to answer that question. So I can give an example.
Okay, so just first, first of all, I want this to be cordial and I wanted to.
I intend to be cordial, okay?
Okay. Oh, thank you, Eric and Tom now speaking.
And I'll go to. People, if people want to tie in what happened at special town meeting, then they need to hear what needs to be said. Uh, the zoning, th- this idea of this regulation isn't mine personally. It did arise out of the work of the zoning working group as well as the work of this board in addressing challenges that we are facing. Um, Clark distributed a memo on the sixteenth. I had written a response to it. I calmed down and did not issue it, but it seemed to imply that. The only reason we should be doing anything is to respond to a problem and and I emphatically disagree with that. Um, I'm gonna, if if you don't mind, I'm just to refresh my increasingly addled memory. Um, what I was going to write in response to Clark is that. I don't think that we have to always draft something, be it a regulation or a bylaw or state statute, federal statute. In response to a problem. There's other reasons why you pass laws and regulations. One is implementing best practices. Uh, and I'll speak to Clark's, the materials he distributed in regard to that, you know, a little bit. Uh, second is in eliminating ambiguity. And the third is to be preemptive and address an issue before it becomes a problem. Now, the reason this is being advanced, you you know, in in, in in. Well, let's, let's just say on the zoning working group, we've come to the conclusion that we are not going to do an entire rewrite. Uh, right, right now, the uh bylaw has twenty-two articles. We're not going to present the town's whole thing in one fell swoop. It's going to come in phases. And at special town meeting, a phase that we thought we needed to do that relates to this regulation. Is to clarify our definitions of streets and ways and the adequacy of them. And if you need to have it respond to a specific problem, well, as we've confronted what's going on in Black Horse Lane. Uh, now Cedar Lane, potentially Dolan Lane, Tad Lane, Ocean Edge Drive, whatever. We we are having the, the pattern of development in cohasset is at the point where what is now being developed. Because of the great value of land are lots in the back, back lots that are off old ways or old common driveways and cart paths. And if you will all recall, back in the fall, when we saw an A and R for Black Horse Lane. We all had a problem with what was there, which is what, six foot wide piece of pavement? As as a matter of fact, Clark, you were the first one amongst all of us who said, I would move to deny this. And then the applicant withdrew it rather than face that. So we all know that this is an issue. And our common driveway regulations, again, the the standards for construction are taken from what we have today. And with regard to Clark's materials about low impact development and these newer trends and things to think about. I've got a chance to quickly glance at them. And I didn't see that they deal with dimensions and construction requirements. And so I don't think that adopting quote unquote low impact development standards is inconsistent with what's here today. And I'm not suggesting that we couldn't tweak what's written here to incorporate some of that.
But. Tom, just a quick, quick comment on on identifying what problems that there exist with private ways or common driveways. I think that um, the the important thing is that we have a a bylaw that works with what the actual problems are. That people are facing in these very specific types of access routes. Not that, not that we, 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 we don't have to do anything if we, if we can't identify a problem. But but the, the identifying the problem helps uh with the response and the um, uh, the design. For uh the regulation that you're proposing.
Again, it's not, this, this proposal is not designed solely to address a quote unquote problem.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying.
It is also intended to, is also intended to update our regulations, to employ best practices. And to preempt potential problems. The issue, the issue that we're presented with the roads that I mentioned. And can be uh expected to confront in the future is whether they are adequate and safe. For use, for the use intended. And with all due respect, Clark, you're on record that you think your road is adequate and safe. And I would wholeheartedly disagree with that.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you were referring to, but in terms of emergency vehicle access. There has been no issue with Dolan Lane, but I think it makes sense to keep my little, my little private way. It's not a common driveway, but it's a private way accessed out of this discussion.
Well, it it, well, I'm sorry. It it creates the.
Okay, we can talk about, we can talk about Hillside Lane.
Uh, excuse me, excuse me. For both of you.
Is there someone yelling?
Order. This is not a debate about individual properties right now.
I suggested that we keep it out of, we keep the individual house out of it, because.
I am, I'm going. Mr. Brewer.
Glassmire lives on a private way as well.
Clark. Clark, I'm not gonna, I I'll I'll not bring up the issue. The issue needed to be addressed of of a potential conflict. You've made your point. I've made my point. We'll move on.
Can I just have a chat?
Member, point of order for all of you. I want to ask other members of the board for their opinions. So, Mr. Grady, would you like to offer some commentary?
Well, I wasn't finished explaining to Eric what this was about, but that's okay.
And I, I was just looking to have a conversation quickly with Tom. It, that's all it was. It was, I I I just, if I just have, and I'll, and I'll be quiet after this.
No, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to explain, I'm trying to explain to you the motivation for this proposed change. And it's not, it doesn't lend itself to a quick soundbite or a quick answer, but.
That's fine. I I respect that.
We are, in a nutshell, we on the board are confronting issues of adequacy and safety in many places in town. And we will continue to do so, given the nature of access and roadways. That the town has developed over the course of time. We have a construction standard for common driveways that is in our regulations now. And it is transferred here, that same construction standard in consultation with the head of our D P W. Is brought over to the non-subdivision private road. Now. Where we ha- where we have no regulation now. The second point about the common driveways is yes. Right now, you can use a common driveway to access eight lots. It is reduced to three in this proposal. We are an outlier in the town of Cohasset on that point. In this area and in other areas where the town is an outlier in our zoning bylaws. I will tell you that the working group is looking to not make us an outlier on our zoning bylaws anymore. This is one. The common driveway at eight lots is an outlier. And it is, in the opinion of myself and others, an end around the subdivision control law. Which, as you all know, would require a road of a different dimension and a different construction standard. And so we are, we are in this regulation setting a tiered system that you. a tiered system that you have common driveway, conserve X number of lots, be so long. The non-subdivision private road can serve so many lots, be constructed a certain way, be so many uh feet in length. And then the third at the top of the hierarchy is the subdivision control road, which will come from an application under the subdivision control law. So, this was done in consultation again with our uh DPW head. Uh, he was very influential in putting in the specific criteria of construction and drainage. But you know, again, I we're going to get off going over this section by section, but but.
Well, Paul Grady wanted to make a comment, I think, a couple of minutes ago.
They asked to make a comment, but I keep.
It will be Eric Potter, then Paul Grady, and uh and if Clark and Tom can't, hey, calm down.
I'm not, I'm not.
No one's acting crazy.
I've got no issue.
I am finished, I am finished with my initial answer to Eric's question on why this bylaw is being proposed in the way it's being proposed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Potter.
I'll I'll be quick. So, so Tom, I I don't, I I see where you're coming from. My my point would be this. I, it it does appear by by make, doing this through a regulation that it could be backdooring a what was otherwise voted down at town meeting. And I know we have the rights to do this via regulation. I think the planning board has a big problem in in front of it in that we need to have the public support to come back to our side and especially with the zoning bylaw review to take place. Um, I don't think that one project necessarily, or even two projects that are were slightly problematic with regards to uh what these regulations recover rises to the level of of being a a exigent uh circumstance that would necessitate regulations to be revised. That's just my opinion. Everybody can have their own. I do think that the, with the zoning bylaw review coming up in the near future, it does appear that we're cherry picking here. And that we're putting a regulation in place when there's going to be um a lot of time for this to be handled in that zoning bylaw review. And it also does appear to some, not necessarily me, but that this is a way of backdooring something without any real significant issues or 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 projects that have been problematic in the past, other than, you know, the few that you've made. Those are my concerns. Um, that's why I'm hesitant to vote on any regulation absent some sort of clear and apparent need for the planning board to take action prior to the comprehensive zoning bylaw review. That doesn't just extend to this, it extends to really all of our uh any matters that would relate to changing regulations or bylaws prior to that comprehensive bylaw review. Uh, that's just my position on it. I I just, I get, that's my concern as well. Eh eh especially moving forward when we're going to want the the public, the citizens of Colossus to have confidence that planning board is acting without any bias within the best interest of the town and 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 being transparent in everything that they do and cherry picking quote unquote, while not necessarily the case here, it could, there could be a a perception that that's taking place with regards to why this. There's a lot of things to do, a lot of act to take. That's why uh I I'm concerned with it, and for no other reason.
Well, let me, let me just respond to that. First of all, that the.
Um, Tom, uh, it's, Mr. Grady has a chance.
No, why don't we let Tom respond? This is getting old. Go let him respond. I'll say my piece after he's done. No, please, just respond. Just get, address our point, Tom. So then, I'll get to my point, then we can eventually hang up the phone.
This, this change is useful to us as a board, whether the bylaw changes ever or not. It is not dependent on a change in the bylaw. It is not dependent on the change in definitions that were, which, by the way, was all it was, was a change of definitions and twisted into something else at town meeting. And you keeps, you you're agreeing with me that, well, except for those things you brought up, yes, except for those things you brought up. We are confronting this issue of adequacy of the access or development all the time now because of the lots that are being developed. And we we need this change. We need to have some standards because right now we have none. And when we 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 sat there with Black Horse Lane back in the fall, we didn't know what to call that, common driveway, a cart path, and we didn't know what to do with it, other than to deny it. And to, and and how do we, how do we determine whether something is adequate or inadequate? The 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 case law lets us make that as a subjective decision. This is trying to help us to give us some objective standards by construction and design for us to make the determinations that we are increasingly being asked to make. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Nothing to apologize for. The two points. I agree with Tom in setting some standards, things that can be changed, but I think we should have some standards we should go by. I'm also, and this is not an accusation, Clark, because I'm not going to get involved in that. Even on this board, if there's any hint of conflict of interest, and I'm not saying there is. I am not not saying I'm not, again, I'll emphasize no accusations.
There isn't.
But if there is the hint of it or something yet out, like for instance, the Pleasant Street project, I recuse myself, even though it's more than five hundred feet from my house. I don't want impropriety on the board. If I have to step back, you step back. I'm not saying to you, I'm just saying that this board should not have that. We've got a lot of important things in front of us, things changing, hopefully for the better, different times. But I don't think that. Should have. No other person in the public should have someone to hang their hat on in any regards, and that means all of us on this board. If there's something that they can hang their hat on and blame for something that may or may not happen is what I'm getting at. I'm not being case specific. But I'll bounce back that I do agree with Tom, that some standards should be set. We should have some rules to go by and some things we can reference to, and that town meeting is town meeting. But I'm also believe that the town should be made aware of every change and uh or proposed change. But that's where I'm going with the conflict of interest.
There is no conflict of interest for me.
All right, if you feel.
But I do have a full-scale model of a private way that I I understand how Tom's regulations would impact somebody that lives on a way like mine. Um, and and that's very useful. And and one of the things that I guess to continue the conversation that I I think makes sense is to is to do some test cases with Tom's regulation to see um how they might play themselves out in maybe significant or insignificant locations. And and in inform uh what the regulation is with real world test cases. I think is a useful exercise prior to passing a regulation.
May I, may I else, I want to, to to Clark's point. You know, and again, skipping around is this regulation will set standards for the construction and design and length of common driveways and non-subdivision private ways, number one. It will create a process, and that I'm doing this for the general public's understanding of this. It will create a process of how adequacy can be determined with those construction and design standards being a presumption of adequacy. I think the thing that is controversial and which creates the potentials of conflicts of interest is that this regulation would require, first of all, it would not require any existing common driveway and non-subdivision private way to meet these standards unless there is new construction added to that road. I I haven't, I have an issue with something, one edit that Carolyn did that I was just reading. It's this, this example with Lambert's Lane, this is a new common driveway to be built from scratch. That new common driveway, any new non-subdivision private road would have to meet these regulations. But as for the existing on the ground today, the design and construction criteria would only have to be met if there is an added dwelling, meaning an added use to that uh driveway or roadway. And I understand that that would be the controversial part because it is the person what the regulation is proposing is that the person who is responsible for the added dwelling would be compelled to do an upgrade if, and that is a big if, the planning board and or building inspector were determined that the driveway or the way is inadequate. So, in a real world example, if um, I'll, I won't, I'll just pick a room. I'll, I'll make up a road. We have A Street and it's currently uh serving.
Well, well, Tom, my, my idea was to use real world.
All right, I'll, all right, all right.
But we may not be able to get to that right now.
No, no, but no.
The point you're making is, is who pays? That's, that's the, and what's the risk to the general public?
I'm trying to.
I'm sorry, let me just finish. It'll take a minute. There is a mass general law for private ways. I think it's eighty-four, section thirteen, that if three or more owners on a, on a private way want to upgrade or pave or maintenance or or put in drainage, then all the owners would have to pay. Like, so for using, using your, your hillside, hillside street, if it's time to repave, if you get two of your neighbors to agree to repave, all of your neighbors will pay. That's a mass general law. And the, and the same could be true of applying these regulations to to one house. If a, if a developer has a house lot and he talks to two of his neighbors, I'll pay for your share if we can get the rest of the ten people to pay for their shares of upgrading the road uh in conformance with these new regulations. There is a, there is an element of um potential expense for the the hapless homeowner who happens to have a neighbor with an extra lot.
Just very quickly before Tom goes on. You talk a long time. This is, I just like Paul is stating about Clark, that's a public interest, but I, I I agree with Paul. Hey, listen, if there's a hint of interest, you should step aside. But this board is sitting in a glass box. If if they think that the perception of of many citizens in towns is that it is anything other than the fact that this board is is taking action to limit development, which at town meeting, there were votes that took place that can be interpreted as a, meaning that to shoot down a board that is overstepping its boundaries with regards to some potential zoning bylaws. Now, if the board wants to have the support of the citizen, what we do is zoning bylaw review. It would be my recommendation, unless there's some sort of emergency or 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 something that is is clearly needed to be reformed, to hold until a zoning bylaw review happens. It, you have to look at it from, because it just, you 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 don't understand the perception of let's say fifty percent of the people out there. And I don't want to be a part of a board that is looking at things as is being seen as as anti-development. Nor do I want to be part of a board that's looking as seen as of of develop the whole, the whole town. I want to be seen, but part of a board that is unbiased in this decision-making. The timing of this is the problem. Tom, I agree with the regulations. I think they're great. The timing is what I have a problem with, and I'm telling you this. If you move forward with adopting these regulations, the it's not going to help the way in which the this board is currently perceived by, and what's going to happen in the long run is that when you do your zoning bylaw review, it's going to be even more scrutinized than than it already is going to be. And i- it's going to create further problems because you, if, no one has yet to show any real real issue with leaving things as is until the zoning bylaw review happens. And in fact, this was kind of proposed and shot down in the comprehensive uh bylaw that was going to 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 change definitions, definitions as such. But you guys, if you want to go that route, you go that route.
I I, well, I'm going to do this, Eric. I'm going to I I feel the need to address misinformation about that. First of all, this board is not anti-development. The zoning working group is not anti-development. And the vast majority of speakers at town meeting were developers, were people who have development interests on small amounts of property, including one from out of town who's here waiting to speak tonight, and we're going to let him speak because he owns property in town. We had people who did not disclose their interests in defeating what were mere definitions that state law already imposes upon us to apply.
Listen, Tom, the national laws were misquoted and the Supreme Court decisions were misquoted in that.
Stop it, Clark. They weren't, all right? I'm not going to argue, Clark, I'm not going to argue with that with you here.
And I'm embarrassed for you to have done that.
I want, I would like to stop this right for a minute. And I'd like to take some comments from the public because we're at loggerheads right now and we're not making progress. So let's inject some other insights and then we'll come back and have further discussions from the board members. Lauren, will you please um promote individuals?
Certainly, yes. Thank you. First, we're going to hear from Matt Watzke. And for all uh members of the public, I see there's a couple of hands raised. When I do promote you to use your microphone camera, please state your name and address for the record. And if you don't have an address in town, just please state your affiliation.
Lauren, how many people do we have?
There's, there's just three people who are wishing to speak right now. Um, Matt Watzke, could you please state your name and address for the record? And if you're not a resident in town, could you just disclose your interest?
Yes, good evening, members of the board and the public. And Lauren, thank you for promoting me to the, to be visible. I'm Matthew Watzke. I, I'm a lawyer. My law offices are in Dedham, Massachusetts. I reside in Westwood. Um, I'm counseled for Chip Smith, uh, the applicant for the preliminary subdivision approval for Black Horse Lane uh that was voted on this past month. Um, and on which we're, we're working on the preparation of the next round of plans to submit to the board. To the extent that, that this kind of rule has been presented um with the idea of trying to block certain projects, and I'm not suggesting that it was directed specifically at Black Horse Lane. Um, it it is not going to have an effect on that because this is in essence a zoning change um under the authority granted by the zoning bylaw and by having filed the preliminary subdivision uh application, uh, this project or this property would be uh under the benefit of the 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 zoning freeze, uh, both the process freeze and then ultimately we would hope and expect to have an approval that would would have the long-term freeze. But because this discussion's going on the way it is, I, it it really pushed me to take a closer look at the uh, at the the proposed change in the rules and the foundation for it, the zoning bylaw. Um, so the first thing that I do when I look at a set of proposed rules and regulations is what, what's the authority that the the board or the agency has to adopt the set of rules? Um, that's just like a state agency, whether it's the DEP or um, uh, you know, some other agency can adopt rules and regulations. They can only adopt rules and regulations that are consistent with their legislative authority. The planning board's authority to adopt rules and regulations governing common driveways comes from the zoning bylaw. You've got section uh three hundred dash seven point three subsection D, which is the common driveway servicing three or more lots may be permitted, and I could share my screen and you could read it. But the servicing three or more lots may be permitted by majority vote of the planning board if it's clearly demonstrated that improved use of the land protection of wetlands or similar public purposes are served. Improving a common driveway and setting conditions thereon, the planning board shall consider the character and intensity of the uses to be served by the proposed driveway, the traffic safety, ease of access at street and highway entrances and intersections, as well as the safety and access to the uses served. And for the purposes of this subsection, the planning board shall, after public hearing, adopt reasonable rules and regulations for the construction of common drives and shall amend such regulations in the same manner. Um, there's a bit more that goes on, but so the most important part of that for purposes of discussion tonight is is that it's, it's common driveway servicing three or more lots may be permitted by majority of the planning board. So, just a, you know, taking it on a very high level, the key things that your proposed set of regulations attempts to do. Just a, you know, taking it on a very high level, the key things that your proposed set of regulations attempts to do. Is to clarify the definition of a common driveway, clarify and putting, I guess, in quotes, to say that it's it's any driveway that serves more than one lot. And that's beyond the scope of your authority under the zoning bylaw, the zoning bylaw says a common driveway is any. Any driveway that serves three or more. And it authorizes the planning board to adopt rules and regulations for common driveways that serve three or more lots. So you don't have the authority, in my view, to adopt a rule that says that you have authority to regulate. A common drive that regulate that that's accessing only two lots because that's inconsistent with your zoning bylaw. I think it is also ultra virus is the Latin expression, but it's also inconsistent with your rule. For you to adopt a rule that that limits the number of lots that can be served by a common driveway to only three. Because the zoning bylaw says it's three or more. So. I can appreciate that you you perceive a problem in the town that you have common driveways accessing too many lots. But that's a problem that has to be addressed by your zoning bylaw, which is the Enabling Act that's. Enabling the 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 planning board to adopt the rule or regulation that's regulating by uh common driveways in the first place. Um if we go past that and I I I don't want to go on.
Is there a time limit?
I there there are there are other there are other issues, those those were the key things that I wanted to point out, you do have. Numerous other issues in this set of regulations that you should consider, for example, there's this specific about the the type of surface course and the binder course that has to be provided. And it would appear the way it's written to prohibit the use of pervious pavement, pervious pavement has become very common these days as a way of properly managing stormwater. Um you have a provision about the the uh any common driveway shall include maintenance and snow removal plan. I don't see any legislative authority to to empower you to do that, you have some inconsistencies. Um you create presumptions in section five permitting issues, you could you you say that there's a presumption. Um of adequacy, but it can be overcome if the public safety or public works department's a certain objection to the adequacy. Or someone determines that an upgrade is required, so. How is that a presumption, you create a presumption except if you determine that an upgrades are required anyway, so it's a presumption that isn't a presumption if you decide it's not a presumption. That's not, that's not clear rule writing, and it's the kind of thing that because it's so vague and ambiguous, it will be subject to overturn.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Watzke, I I want to um. Move my uh comments uh to Ms. Lynn, but I we appreciate the comments that you're making, uh Ms. Lynn.
Yes, I just wanted to note that uh we do try to keep folks to a three minute maximum, and I believe that we've gone beyond, but uh thank you very much for the commentary, I'm I'm going to move on to the next, we have.
If I may, I'd be glad to submit something in writing to give you a summary of each of the issues.
Thank you.
I I just wanted to assure.
Oh, but I did say, Paul, I did say that we were going to take comments from the public, so.
No, we're going to be lectured to.
We're not, uh, no.
Being lectured to, just ideas.
Um Lauren, can you please promote the next person?
Thank you, Mr. Watzke, any comments?
There's nothing wrong with that.
For for any, just for the record, for any public.
Representing another project. That's grandfathered in.
Uh let's move.
Doesn't matter where comments.
Paul, can you please let us continue, thank you.
So just thank you, just for the record, so for public comment, we are um we are supposed to take any member of the public. Uh we've had asked this for counsel before, so that is why we uh take commentary, so we will try to ask people again, please not to be repetitive for points that have already been made. Please try to keep to a three minute maximum, uh at any time, any members of the public are more than welcome to submit letters or comments or any sort of information, whether it's via. A public meeting or while a public hearing is opened, you can submit to the planning board office, I'm Lauren Lind, so. I'm going to move on to our next comment, um.
I'm also setting a setting a timer so that everybody that's going to speak will know that now.
Sure, I will set a timer, um when they begin speaking, and then so we have Barbara O'Prey and then uh Steve Bjorkland would like to address the board, there's no one else in the audience that has. Uh raise their hand, there is a comment then, um. I'll just I'll just state this now, Tanya Menche at twenty five Tad Lane, I only want to comment that since this is a public hearing as a town resident. I'd appreciate hearing all public comments without interruption or disrespect from board members, thank you. So um I'm going to. Move on over then to Barbara O'Prey, could you please state your name and address for the record, and please try to uh stick within the guidelines that we set out for public comment.
Barbara O'Prey, one seventy two Beach Street, um I'm having a hard time understanding the rationale. On the common driveways, you're you're saying you want an eighteen foot driveway, which is, I think, about one and a half times the normal driveway. Certainly wide enough for two cars to pass because Beach Street isn't even that wide in places. Um but still, you're saying you want a three foot shoulder, which means taking down a lot more trees probably. And a forty foot right of way, and to me, that seems pretty excessive since most of our roads have a forty foot right of way. Why is this necessary for a driveway that you say is going to serve only two to three houses? Could someone explain the rationale?
I'll 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 explain it that the, again, the construction and design standards are what are set forth in our current. Common driveway regulation. For the uh again, because today we have up to eight lots, we have a. Graduated schedule like for one to three lots, it's certain instruction standard, I think, three to five is another, and then over five is another. Uh we took the middle one um at the recommendation of our. Public Works head and for what. The help for what they need to do with expected drainage and snow removal and then. Public sa- you know, the access of public safety vehicles and fuel delivery vehicles, so it it wasn't made up out of nowhere, it was taken from our existing regulations. And applied to both the common driveway. And to the non subdivision private road, again. That construction standard would not be required to be applied to existing roads and driveways as long. As there is. Not an addition of usage by the building of a new house, so everything is grandfathered as a general rule. And if the road is that it's. The driveway or the road that we're talking about is also deemed to be inadequate, so there would be no need to upgrade to this unless there is both an addition of use. By an additional dwelling. Or and and a finding of inadequacy of what is there on the ground on that particular street, so it will always be case by case. Um but it's not going to require anybody to change anything as long as there's no new usage, uh added usage to a particular road. And then, you know, and for example, I I, you know, again, if I may, with. Real world example. Uh Dolan Lane is a narrow roadway, we all know that. It has what now, two houses, perhaps three, I'm not sure uh what's been built.
Three, there's three houses, I live there.
I know you do, there's three now, there's three now, and there's there's the possibility for two more. As as far as I know, and so the question will become if those two houses were built, adding to the usage and the demands on the road and the safety and added. Access requirements, should that road be upgraded or not? If there is a determination, and there is a process to make that determination set forth here. Then there is going to be a certain construction and design standard. Taken from our existing construction and design standards. If I want I want to explain to Mr. Watzke that this wasn't designed to stop what's going on in Black Horse Lane, and to the contrary. When this was first presented to us as an A N R, there was concern that there could ultimately be, I think, six to. Six or six plus houses being served by what then was proposed, just to serve by the existing six foot. Wide piece of pavement, so to the contrary, we wanted to see whatever was going to happen on Black Horse Lane. Have a better access and. You you know, now the current proposal of Mr. Smith is is to indeed provide that better access. For the for the degree of development that is potentially uh capable up there, so.
Do we have other public comments?
Um just a minute, we I think, do we have any, we have one more, right?
Ms. Ms. Dr. Prey has.
No, you didn't answer my question, my question was, why do you need a forty foot right of way for a common driveway, I wasn't talking about Dolan Lane, which is a state road. I was talking about a common driveway.
I and I'm I'm suggesting to you, I'm telling you that the the design standard set for a common driveway exists today in our current. Common driveway regulations and has existed in that form for years, decades.
I look. All right, let's um uh let me say uh that for our next speaker, um as we've had um multiple interventions by him, I hope that the information is new that we're going to hear that will help us.
Steve.
Um yes, sorry, Zoom is just, there we go.
Saying this correctly, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Steve, could you just state either your name, address, or affiliation, please?
Yes, I guess I will, absolutely.
Thank you.
Steve Bjorkland, I'm a property owner in Cohasset, I live at eight sixty one Main Street presently in Norwell. But was uh spent most of my life in Cohasset, and I think most of the board members have heard me speak before at this point. Um and I just want to bring up, and I'm not going to reiterate a lot of things that happened already this evening and a lot of the discussion. But I think right now Cohasset has a great common driveway bylaw. I think that the misconception here is that common driveways are certainly different than private roads. And they are treated differently as private roads, although the fire department and the building inspector. Are presently the ones that determine whether or not there is adequate access to lots that are being served by those. Uh driveways and or private roads, what's happening here? And again, clearly, town meeting voted down what we're looking to do right now. And they're right that a two lot driveway is referred to as a shared driveway in Cohasset. And I have built and worked on a number of common driveways. That worked out perfectly in Cohasset, and there was no problem with them, they're very safe, there's been no issues that I know of. Um this is clearly. An attempt to have a five member board vote with three members. To overturn what the will of town meeting was on a zoning article that they did not pass.
Mr. Borkland, you do not have evidence for that, so why don't you?
I was at the town meeting and I spoke at the town meeting.
I understand that, you you don't have, you don't know who's going to vote what and everybody's opinions, so it's unnecessary for you to say that.
It was already voted, it was voted down at town meeting, correct?
I I all I'm saying is you don't know what the individual members on the planning board are going to do.
I I'm not talking about the planning board, I'm talking about town meeting voting this down. Okay, well, you you have the authority right now to vote this thing through, it's free, you guys want to vote it through, have at it. I personally believe it's the wrong thing to do, it's not the sentiment that town meeting set. By not approving this at town meeting, that's what the comment I was making, and I'm not being argumentative, it's a fact that it was turned down, okay? But you have the power to pass it, you could shut everybody off right now, vote it through, we're done, we'll deal with it at that point. But what's happening is the planning board is now taking the authority over single lots on private roads. That have no division of land, okay, no division whatsoever of land, because if there is a division, you already have mechanisms in place. To provide that access, this is taking over individual protected lots. And now saying that the planning board is going to be the one to determine if that existing road is adequate access or not. Court cases will go on and tell you that it's been up to the fire department and the building inspector, so what's being asked right now is to give that authority to the planning board, Tom won't disagree with that. That's exactly what it is, they want authority over every lot in town, you can do it if you want, I personally believe it's the wrong thing to do. And that's all I really want to say.
Thank you very much.
Steve, Steve and I have tangled many times over the years.
Are there are there any other public comments?
Let's let's not tangle any further.
No, I I don't, I I don't want to get. But I I don't, I won't stand for mischaracterization of what's trying to be done.
Tom, can we redirect here, are there any other public comments?
There are no more public comments, there's nothing in the Q and A, and no one with their hand raised, thank you.
So I mean, the the issue I have uh i- is is going back to uh the summer, when I had a a chat uh with the preliminary um stuff that. Uh was proposed for fall town meeting, is is it Tom sort of writes these these bylaws and then is unbelievably inflexible when you bring up. And then attacks and and you know, it it's it's unnecessary, I think that. Uh updating these regulations is fine, whether it's a part of the zoning or comprehensive zoning overhaul or outside of that, but. What we want to do is to make the best regulation that we can, that's targeted for the issues that we have in Cohasset, and it's not. It's not a bottom up, um you know, uh attorney doing design problems, it's a top down with the big picture and bottom up for details. That really is the is the best solution for Cohasset and is workable and complies with the laws, and I and I think attorney uh Wat- Watley. Watley makes a a good point that we can't stray from what's in seven point three section B. Um in terms of the the writing of this regulation, it has to conform to what's in the zoning bylaw.
All right, so I I can say at this point that I feel we um ought to take a rest here and.
Sounds great.
And and uh continue this public hearing at another time because we are not going to find a reconciliation. Uh amongst the members of the board at this moment.
I'll make a motion to continue, what's the best date?
Well, um. I guess, may I make a suggestion, let's just clarify the pieces of information we want to obtain and run by council between now and then. And that way we can have a concrete plan about what we need and what we need to circulate so people can look at it in advance, um. Can we take make a list of what, just concretely again, so we're all clear on the same page, and then based on that list, we can then determine what date would be appropriate.
Well, couldn't we just continue to our next meeting and then and then?
Can I can I make?
It seems like there's a lot of work to do on these.
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion? Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead, Mr. Callahan.
Since I'm, you know, th- this is being tagged.
You're the author of this stuff.
Well, you know, I I I I resent the fact that this continues to be tagged as some personal agenda of mine, I am working here with other people and in the best interest.
I know what you're trying to do, the best thing for the town.
All right, you know what?
Incredibly inconsiderate.
No, I'm not, I'm actually.
Clark, let him speak. Clark, let Tom speak.
But as the as the one member here who is presenting this, I want to make the following suggestion. First, that we not take this up earlier than our first March meeting because it isn't going to get pulled together in a week or two weeks. Second, Carolyn has already looked through this, and Carolyn has. Given opinions on if there's new stuff in here, uh you know, on. And the upgrade requirement and you know, my belief it was already vetted that those were all okay legally. Uh attorney, I I know Matt, Matt Watzke, I'm sorry, Matt, I missed your last name there, but um. He brings up a point about the authority deriving from the bylaw, I agree with that from a legal perspective. And I would just ask for Carolyn to uh opine on that. And if that is inadequate position or a correct position, then we need to. Redo the this this, the whole process has to be redone and started over again. Um that that's the only thing that I see it that we actually need from Carolyn at this point because she has vetted everything that's on the paper up to this point. Uh the second thing, the second thing, Clark, to the extent that, like I said earlier. The low impact development stuff and and. There was one of them, uh the M A P C's presentation and slides, it's not widely used in Massachusetts yet.
D T P C has a couple of guides to.
I get it, I understood that, I looked at those and 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 I, in quickly looking at them, I didn't see that any. I get it. I understood that. I looked at those and 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 I, in quickly looking at them, I didn't see that any of them set forth any particular design and construction criteria.
I am gonna ask I I want to stop this because not all of us read that material. It is not something that we can absorb, really, no.
Can we just continue this? I was trying to make a motion. Let's just
I am, I I am trying to get us to the point of continuing this. So in continuing this, Carolyn's opinion on Attorney Watzke's points. Clark, I'm going to ask you to work with me with these low impact design things of integrating it into this. Don't cover your screen. I'm asking you between now and the next time we just deal with this, you work with me.
Sure, I'm happy to work with you, Tom.
Fine, thank you. That's all I'm asking at this point. And then if any other members of the board or the public wants to s- comment on a particular section and and their concerns about that, but I I I do want us to get beyond the point that this is a backdoor attempt at what happened at town meeting. It isn't. As I said, these changes could help us today under our current rules and what we're dealing with. And if everybody understands that we can go forward constructively, come March, I may agree with everybody that we put this off. Carolyn may say we legally can't do it and and agree with Attorney Watzke. But between now and then, let me work with Clark, let me work with Carolyn to 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 address those issues.
All right, thank you for that uh intervention. Lauren, how difficult would it be to have somebody actually look at the common driveways that we have in town and actually uh do some kind of assessment of their condition?
Do you mean like to do an inventory of the existing?
This would be a serious job. I am talking to
There was analysis of four, four common driveways that was done back in April.
Yes.
That would be a good start.
Thank you, uh Ms. Lynn, Ms. Lynn.
What I'm gonna make a suggestion is that we continue this to a date and time certain in March, and then we plan just collectively um for the next meeting, which will be um February ninth, to have everyone take some thought about what they want to determine between then and March. We can have public members comment. We can obtain all these things and then get a more concrete idea. Cause I think we've heard a lot tonight and I think people may be need to reflect on what they'd like. Um, you know, I, Clark uh distributed some material earlier today that I can be happy to distribute to a larger audience that everyone can be on the same page and have time to look at it. So would you like to proceed that way?
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay, so I'm gonna recommend, so we we our two March meetings um are March sixteenth and March thirtieth. Because we have such a long gap between our last February and March meeting, I'm gonna suggest we put this on March thirtieth. And then at that point, you can determine if you want to continue to a date and time certain after beyond that.
Motion to continue to March thirtieth.
All right, I also just want to acknowledge that there's a comment in the the chat from uh Virginia Jensen, who's says, from my perspective, the planning board is trying to look out for the safety and interest of property owners in town by addressing this issue. So thank you. I don't want that to get lost in the um um minutes.
Can I just make one point? Regard regarding the request to study these four common driveways and everything. The 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 change in the common driveway regulations that are real si- the the significant change here is the number of lots that would be allowed to be serviced by it. It's not the condition of common driveways in the town today. The condition of a common driveway today only becomes an issue if this regulation were to pass and an upgrade were to be required. The real core issue is, do we want common driveways to serve eight lots? Now, you know, Steve Bjorkland said it was a great thing, but I I didn't get to ask him the question because and I know from the working group, we have the data. There is no other town near us that uses eight. Three is the me, is the median. Some are two, some are five. We're eight. We are an outlier in that. That's the core issue with the common driveway. Is how many lots should be served by it? Not what the condition of the driveway is. And I I just would ask us to focus on that.
Okay, so but what we have done is we just heard uh that there's an item of focusing on the large number of lots in our situation versus others. All right, uh we have a motion that's been made. Can I get a second? Uh roll call vote, Clark Brewer.
Aye.
Tom Callahan.
Aye.
Paul Grady.
No.
Eric Potter.
Potter, uh I and Tom, it that that by and Amy, everybody on the board, there is no personal it has nothing, it's not the personal at all. I'm just trying to play devil's advocate here. So just so you know, Tom. I highly respect everything that's being done. I'm just looking out for the board in general, but I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I. Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you, you Lauren Lind. Thank you, planning board members. We'll see you in two weeks.
Um, I'm sorry, manager.
Oh, I can't do that. I can't, uh, I'm sorry.
Uh we actually, so this is, this hearing is continued to March thirtieth at six thirty P M. And then um we just have some minutes to approve. And then we'll have to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Right, thanks, sorry.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes. Lauren, fill in the dates, fill in the dates.
Hold on, I just gotta pull them up. I just had them.
Sorry.
Okay, um, so it's it's August eleventh, twenty twenty-one, October twentieth, twenty twenty-one, December first, twenty twenty-one, and January fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Wow, we're we're up to date. That's fabulous. Thank you, Angela.
Move that all four sets be approved as written.
Thank you. Clark Brewer. Tom Callahan, Eric Potter, Amy Glassmeyer, I. Um, there are no committee liaisons on updates tonight. Um, planning director, do you have uh updates you'd like to convey?
So uh just quickly, I'll tell you about the next two meetings. I know it's getting late, so I'll keep it brief. We have a meeting on uh February ninth. We'll hear twenty-six Lambert's Lane, the A and R and the Common Drive again. We're gonna have a discussion about uh some of the goals we've identified that we've wanted to pick back up on relative to the village and the harbor. Uh some liaison updates. It's a light meeting. Two sixteen, we hear a new large house review at two seventy Jerusalem Road. We hear uh twelve Parking Way. The Oyster Bar comeback for the special permit for the entertainment piece. We have five eighty Jerusalem Road. It's a scenic roads application that's for retroactive tree removal in the town right of way at five eighty Jerusalem Road. And we um will also hear from Heritage Lane again. Then just a couple more items quickly before you conclude. Other pending items that we have heard from uh in the town departments are um fifty-five South Main, as you know, that's been on the on the horizon for a while. That's the gas station in the village. And then most recently, forty-four and eighty-four Border Street, which is uh the current site of Atlantica and the Lobster Pound Buildings. They have approached the board. They've been, uh, I'm not sorry, the town inquiry at the permitting paths. And what they're doing is uh due to the complex sort of chapter ninety-one modifications and the zoning that would result with a a full raisin reconstruction of a new structure. What they're doing is just a major renovation to the buildings and they plan to keep restaurant use, to keep maintain the Lobster Pound use and introduce potentially some new commercial or restaurant use and uh in in style of uh, you know, short-term accommodations. So that's what they approached the town with from a concept perspective, and they will be looking to apply for the zoning board and the planning board uh likely within the coming month. And then
Are they gonna come before us in the conversation? Lauren, is that what you're saying? Is it?
They will, yes, they will be before the board.
Okay. They're not asking us for anything. They're basically giving us an update for what they're doing.
So they are going to apply for a site plan review.
Okay.
And then they need special permits for the zoning board.
Right, okay.
And then finally, just which, as you've heard earlier, the return of ninety-four Black Horse Lane, we heard from their engineers. Um, we're contemplating uh opportunities to maybe modify their plan to return. So more to come on those three items. And that's all I have for you for now. I will wait until our next meeting uh to give you committee and other sort of planning initiative updates.
Did Grady leave already?
Uh, he did, yes. I think he left when uh
All right.
Closed the last hearing.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Roll call, um Clark Brewer.
Aye.
Tom Callahan.
Aye.
Eric Potter.
Aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, good, thank you. Good night, Lauren. Good night, Carolyn, and uh we'll
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.